Item number four, consideration of long-term approval of the Christmas tree at Fourth Avenue pedestrian mall.
Thank you, Mayor. I had talked with Mr. Baker with Main Street Leasing regarding the continuation of the Christmas tree at Fourth Avenue pedestrian mall. They actually asked me to just to read something. Their sense of it is time is of the essence. They really just need to know whether the city council desires to continue at that location, and if so, I put some general parameters if we were going in the form of an agreement. But what they, a statement they have is, "The tree is set up by the same folks that do Disney in large cities in the area that put up multiple trees, so Main Street and Mount Dora don't get to choose optimal dates closer to the holidays as the company's larger clients take priority during the holiday rush. The song list has to be established, songs approved, licensing checked prior to programming. There are only a limited number of people capable of qualified for these programs, one or two in the country. That person, again, needs to be scheduled around the entities with this type of tree. The platform for the tree has to be constructed on-site and refreshed each year because of the wear and tear. The toy soldiers that stand at the corners have to be refreshed and repainted. It does take eighteen to twenty-four hours to install the tree. Again, Main Street has to work around the schedule with the crews that are also in demand by Disney, Altamont, and other larger cities in central Florida. The sequencing and programming of the music and lights need to be fine-tuned each year. Sequencing is done in conjunction with a greeting from Main Street Leasing and the City of Mount Dora, welcoming visitors to Mount Dora during the Christmas season. All of this is done in conjunction with the partnership with the City of Mount Dora so that Main Street can lease, so that Main Street can be sure to have the tree up and functional for the city's light-up Mount Dora program to usher in the holidays. This year in particular is critical because the tree is scheduled for a major refurbishing before all of the items that need to be done can be accomplished. And so, you know, they stress that they really would like the direction from the council. First and foremost, do you still want it there at the Fourth Avenue before any other dialogue would take place?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to give Main Street Leasing five years, from 2016 to 2020, to have a tree, Christmas tree, at Fourth Avenue pedestrian walk.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Well, yeah, um, I have some-
Could we, just, could we have the affirmative first of the motion maker first speak? Wouldn't that be better?
Okay.
We could.
The option is given to you if you would like to be the first one to-
Yes, I would.
Well, then, why not?
I love Christmas in Mount Dora downtown. I look forward to it all year long, and the big Christmas tree is one of my favorites. It used to be down on Main Street's property. That was good, that was all right, but may put it down in the pedestrian on Fourth Avenue. For some reason, I just saw Mount Dora come even more alive. People were just hanging on there, taking pictures, and it was just such a Charles Dickens time in our city. And I would, anyone who is against this, I would just think is a big old Grinch, because I think it is just the most fabulous thing at the best time of the year from Mount Dora. I mean, the shops, you know, they get the greatness from it. And I saw an email from a constituent, and they're saying, "Well, the music, Christmas music about with the restaurants." But you know what those restaurants do very well with people sitting there, eating, and looking at all the, you know, people there and everything. So I see no negative whatsoever. And I thank Main Street Leasing for doing this, because it cost them a lot of money to do this. Who else would do that? If you move that tree, I just think it's a little bit of Grinchitis, my take on it.
I seconded the motion, so I will say my piece. Let me tell you a story. This is not a story, a little experience. My wife and I, Shirley and I, would volunteer for Lake Care's food pantry for six years. And Main Street Leasing was kind enough to let Lake Care's food pantry have the, I call it the Sears-Alexander, and the fourth and the ginger, Sears-Alexander, is that what it is? And we offered to the public in the evenings during Christmas, not free, hot chocolate for a dollar, and make some money for Lake Care's food pantry. So Main Street Leasing was kind enough to do that, to support the food pantry in this area. So we did that volunteering. From five o'clock till nine o'clock, we did it probably, I think, three nights on weekends, and from five o'clock till nine o'clock when we were there, during December, the tree was crowded around the tree. The most common thing you saw were people having their kids and their family against the tree, and the cameras were flashing. So people were taking pictures constantly in there. When people would come by to, we'd say, "Would you like some hot chocolate for Lake Care's food pantry donation?" And they would order hot chocolate. They didn't talk about Lake Care's food pantry. They just gave their dollar or whatever it was, and they talked about that beautiful Christmas tree. "Oh, and by the way, we just left Price's Rising, we just left the restaurant, and we just had a big meal, and we wanted to come down and see the tree." That was constant from seven until nine. Now, not only is it a valuable business benefit to downtown merchants, all downtown merchants, but for the aura that the City of Mount Dora enjoys, it's a wonderful addition. It doesn't cost us anything, and the document that I've read that events our council has drafted has hold harmless agreements that are covered. I would only recommend that we add us as an additional insured to that. It gives us an extra protection, and I think they would agree to that. And so it doesn't cost Mount Dora except for some electricity, which is a small trade-off. For the business that it brings down there is a wonderful addition. It's, it's Christmas. It has very little religious overtone to it, if you think about the, I hear the Hallelujah chorus played periodically, but there's jingle bells and everything else in that tree. And Christmas tree is universal, from a religious standpoint, almost. So I can see no downside, and I could see, if we didn't adopt this, I could see maybe used to saying, "Can we have that Christmas tree, please?" I'm not sure the downtown merchants would appreciate that tree leaving the downtown area of Mount Dora during Christmas. So I support the motion. I see you looking.
I too love the Christmas tree. I love the music, all of that. The only thing I don't love is the location in the pedestrian mall, in that pedestrian street. And the reason, there are two reasons I don't like it there. One is that I think that, well, actually, maybe three. I've heard parents say, "Watch out, Johnny, watch out, Johnny, cars come there." And it's very, very close to Four Alexander and Fourth, where cars come and children run around. And that's one thing. So I think it's, I think it was safer back in the, in where it used to be, in the big, you know, gravel lot. However, it could also go in the middle of Sunset Park, in that big square there. The horse and carriage can't get through, if we ever get the horse and carriage back. There was some discussion this Christmas season about, "How come we didn't see the horse and carriage?" Well, one source of information, the Chamber of Commerce initially said, "Well, they said they couldn't get the, you know, the carriage through because the Christmas tree was in the way." So that's something to think about. And plus, taxpayer money actually did go to make the little cutout so that the horse and carriage could have their, have their, you know, stationed there. And Christmas time is a time you would think that, you know, the horse and carriage would be even the most active. And the third, my third concern is trying to get emergency vehicles down that street when there's a big Christmas tree in the way, and so, I mean, that obviously blocks it. I'd like to see it. I understand, I talked to Mr. Middleton about this a couple of weeks ago when we first started thinking about it. And he said that he had had some issues with, you know, kids falling down and kind of scraping their knees in the gravel, and the gravel was a little un, you know, not level. So, and I understand that. And even some adults may have problems with, you know, equilibrium and everything. But I think the ideal spot would be to move it across to the park itself in the center. Now, you're looking at possibly not having enough space for, what, maybe two food truck nights, you know? Okay, maybe we can work around it. Maybe we can put food, you know, food truck tables further down into the, into the plaza there. The other thing is the installation. I understand trying to, you know, coordinate installations with the people that are doing it, and they have lots of other important clients to do too. But the installation last year really sort of butted up against the plant fair. And I'd like to ensure that the plant fair placement and their vendors don't run into the same situation that they did this past year with having to, at the last minute, you know, move. So that maybe we could suggest that they, if at all possible, delay the setup until at least after the plant fair. Those are my only concerns. I like the idea that the, that the electricity cost is now incurred by the CRA fund. I don't have a problem with that. I've had people complain to me about, about why am I, why are my electricity rates, you know, paying for this? I'm not sure as far as advertising, the advertisement that was on the base of the tree this year was, I thought it was tasteful and all of that. And the musical, you know, talking or whatever, you know, brought to you by Mount Dora and Main Street Leasing and the City of Mount Dora. But then it kind of, to me, went a little bit on like, "Visit the Modernism Museum and look for, look for the Main Street Leasing logos on certain shops." That, that was a little, I don't know, just a little sort of like advertising. That's, those are my thoughts.
You know, I thought, no, there's no way anyone's going to find a negative, but there, there they are. But let me tell you something. I was on the CRA when we planned the pedestrian walk area, and that is for, I was on the CRA back in 2012. That's when we designed it to be that way, for having like, you know, little artists there, whatever, for people to mingle. And that's definitely what that tree does. People mingle around it. In the park, like you suggested, that's where they have bands and, you know, picnics or sitting down and stuff. And then the horse and carriage, number one, I love horses, but I'm not a big fan of the horse and carriage, because I saw one time a horse got spooked by a car. It went up, took off, ran into two cars, bashed the two cars in. People fell out of it. I am not in favor of that, so you can't get in with the horse and carriage. And talking about busy streets, Fifth Avenue is busier than Alexander we were talking about, which is where you wanted it, but where the Main Street Leasing is.
No, I said, I did not-
Fifth Avenue right there is very, very busy.
I didn't suggest that. I suggested it in Sunset Park, just on the plaza area there, you know, where we were all sitting.
I know, but you were saying before, at Main Street Leasing's place without the gravel.
That's a different place.
Yeah, that was behind the, behind the two restaurants there.
But what you're suggesting, that's all right. But if you put it in the park, I mean, how people are going to mingle around in that pedestrian area there? And to not have that tree there, to hopefully the horse and carriage, who's not always there. We don't even have one right now. I just think it's more than just you not wanting the Christmas tree there. I think it's a little bit about, you know, not liking Main Street Leasing, and that's what I think I have at that point.
Whoa, 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 no, don't read into, no. Now you're turning things into a negative, okay?
No, I know, it's, it's true.
This really, but no. You don't, you cannot, you're not going to sit there and, and tell everybody what's inside of Mrs. Tillitt's mind. You don't know what's there. I don't know what's there, okay? Please.
Ms. Rich, the purpose of discourse is that we can disagree without being disagreeable. And that's what the council is for. We all have different opinions. My recommendation is that we move the tree to the plaza for a year, see what happens. I don't think people can really mingle around the tree in the middle of the Fourth Avenue pedestrian mall. You can't walk around it. You have to go back up onto the sidewalk and around anyway. So it's a suggestion.
Right. And that's what we're talking about, is I think the suggestion is that I might, I have some issues too with not, not so much the location, but some parts of the, of the agreement thing that we're looking at here. Mr. Oletto, go ahead.
It is a pedestrian mall. It's not a Christmas tree stand display for three months. The mall was there for the pedestrians. That's why we put the pavers there. The cutout for the horse and carriage was thawed out and placed there. Somehow they got chased away. Because I saw the contract. We had a contract for that this past year.
Do we have horse and carriage now?
We had it for this past year, and it got chased away. There was a contract. It's, you can look on the website. You can see that. But anyway, not only is it the pedestrian mall, it was also designed where people could see the lake from Fourth Avenue, looking down to Fourth Avenue. This has become a structure that's up for over three months, and Christmas is, we'll say, if you want to stretch it out, one month. And like was said in the past, the stand, the platform was put up for, before the, I think it was Halloween area, last time or wherever, but Halloween timeframe. But the, back to the advertising, you know, I had Main Street Leasing on there, okay, they want to advertise, they have a tree. But in here, they want to put twenty-four square feet of advertising per side. That is ninety-six square feet of free advertising on the taxpayers' free property here. I just got some issues with this. I agree with Ms. Tillitt, you know, back in the, by the chamber, or back on the property owner's property, the guy who owns the tree and is advertising it.
What a comment, Mayor. Just your response to Ms. Tillitt, that brings up some interesting points. One, one comment that she made was, she didn't like the location, but it should be in that gravel area. Well, from a safety standpoint, I saw it in the gravel area, and what I saw a lot of is lots of children taking that gravel and throwing it at the tree and throwing it at each other. There's also in that area these deep steps, and I've seen children, my wife and I have seen children fall from those steps while they're playing on those steps and hurt themselves. Saw blood running down one, and mom took care of it. But so, to me, there's far more danger if you're talking about safety. At that gravel location, if that's where they want to put it, it's fine with me, but I like it where it is. There's far more danger to children there than its current location. And as far as the advertising goes, it seems to me, the benefit that's, for the, I don't know how much that tree costs, a hundred thousand dollars, I don't know what it is, it's a lot of money, for the benefit of them putting that there free of charge essentially, with a little bit of advertising in Modernism Museum, that's a really small price to pay for the value that the city and the downtown merchants get for that, in my view.
I hear a few business owners downtown, you know, why, why can't they get a piece of this action? Several business owners, big and small. So it shows a favoritism here of, I have no objection against the tree itself, you know, we all love it. I've got a couple granddaughters who love to run around the tree. I've been down there with my granddaughter some, I don't know how many times, in the gravel area. They never fell down. I didn't see anybody get hurt. I saw kids fall. That's normal, we all have. But as far as that being a reason, kids are kids, and, you know, that's just part of it. But the advertising was just out of hand, and the businesses were complaining about it. And I know a lot, three or four different businesses telling me about it, not counting individual businesses.
May I ask you something?
Hold on, I was going to hear from Mr. Lett, I'll get back to you.
I understand the concerns with the gravel, and, and I don't, I don't have a problem with that at all. My recommendation is that we move it out of the pedestrian mall, which will then free up that area for horse and carriage. A lot of people like it, a lot of, maybe a few people don't, but a lot of people do and want that back. And try it in the main Sunset, Sunset Park area, in that big circular, you know, area that we have. There's plenty of room for running around, for kids to walk around. There are more, there are benches there for people to sit on. You can put tables for the food trucks in the pedestrian mall, and try it and see what happens. I mean, if, maybe it'll be a total bust, and if it is, then we'll reevaluate next year.
And if they remove all the trees, the latte table, all the trees?
And maybe other, maybe other businesses will want to have trees too.
Mayor, if I may just, just one, a couple of little things to clarify. One is, actually, Main Street Leasing has paid for the electricity over the years. And if the city was to incur it, I would have it suggested out of CRA funds. The other part is, if you relocate it, I'm not sure where the service will be provided. I know that when it was moved there, that our electric utility department had to work with providing a service drop suitable for that. So that may be, we may have something there that works. I don't know.
In the center, in the center of the park is a electrical, and in that water underneath the, the pavers, it will work?
It just, depending on-
It was all put in to handle a large fountain in there if need be.
Oh, if that's, if the electrical-
And we have some exhausts on the back of the, of the restrooms is all put in to handle all this electricals for these different things in the park.
Well, I would, yeah, just, just to make sure that the capacity is sufficient for a pretty large tree like that. You know, I know that there's other service there, but I just, this is extensive.
I don't have a problem with that location, but I have a thought.
I realize that, you know, basically, but we have, I mean, people say this, that's not costing the city anything. It does cost the city something. We are talking a public street. It's being closed off for a very long period of time. And, you know, from, and the issue I had last year with, it was one interfered with the, with the plant fair. At the plant fair, that the tree took precedent over a plant fair by one week, and that was, I felt totally wrong, okay, at that point. So that needs to be corrected to start with on that. The electricity, the thing ensures that the city provides electricity, you know, for this thing. Again, this is, this is a, you know, a private tree. We're providing a large area. I don't think that the city should provide the electricity.
And they've provided it in the past, possibly.
And, and, okay, because we're talking about CRA funds, and, but then again, Mr., just correction on Mrs. Tillitt. The city just, we just turned around and gave the CRA a lot of taxpayer money, okay? And the builder fund up, and so those funds will be used to pay, if we did it through the CRA, we'd be paying for anyways, the taxpayers, in essence, will be paying for it, you know, for electricity, not the CRA fund.
Well, I don't-
It's coming out of there, but we gave the money basically from the taxpayers.
Yeah, but that issue's off the table.
Okay.
Main Street has basically paid that bill in the past and has indicated they're willing to continue.
And the, and it has to be done with the, you know, with the indemnifying and holding the city's harmless, and I don't see putting that onto our, and into our liability coverage whatsoever. And it's not our responsibility at that point. We have our own liability coverage in, and I can't see paying that by giving that away to anybody else on that point.
An additional insured would come, come to us back?
Well, you do, you're indemnifying and holding harmless the city, and then it's, you get put on as a, as an additional insured, all their, all their insurance policy has to come to us, you know, with all the, you know, proper risk. You know, as far as the location, again, I have not too much, my own personal, I have no real big issue with the location, except for a couple of things that Mrs. Tillitt mentioned about the, the horse and carriage issue that we've had in the past, and then I know they haven't come down. That's been an issue, trying to do that. We do have, again, it is a public walkway in there, and it's designed, and that's what it was designed for. And the period of time that that thing is sitting there, and it's beautiful. And I'm agreement with Mr. Oletto. My grandkids may come visit the holidays and other people. It's great, but it's, and it's beautiful. And I'll never, never take that away from, you know, from Main Street Leasing and praise them for what they do in providing that tree, but it's sitting there in a, you know, in that one spot, and it's just, it's taken away from that, that public walkway, especially at the Christmas time, that that public walkway really has an opportunity to shine itself as far as being a public walkway. We're taking away from that. And I'm just wondering if there's, I don't want to deny anything, but I also, I think we got some room yet for some negotiation and some things, and maybe to talk about, and, you know, with this. And, you know, to come up and, come up with this location, the proper, the proper thing for it, because I think everybody's talking the same thing here. It's just where we, where we put the tree. And I know Main Street Leasing is willing to do what they have to do. It is their tree. It is their basic, their advertisement, and, and they're the ones who should be footing the, basically, the full cost of everything for it. Now, the city can't help out with certain things. I have no problem with that. But giving up that whole street is, I think, is a major issue with a lot of the people, and, and-
May I ask something?
Go ahead.
Chris Carson, is the plant and garden fair always at the same time? I know this past year there was a overlap, but I think I heard you say last year that it was not going to ever happen again.
Well, I can, I'll, I'll address that. Actually, that was my area, allowing them to set up in advance of that, not realizing that the plant and garden fair went in there. That was my bad. I think in the future, we're also looking at maybe concentrating that into an area, so it's a little, maybe not necessarily all of it on the street the way it is. So we've talked about doing that in the upcoming event.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. So I'd like to say, to your main point about Grinches or not, I say, you know, generally, I'd have to say, "Ho, ho, ho." You know, that's, that's how I feel about it. In that, and it's a gift, and so it's hard to talk about a gift when people have done so much. My kids rain around on the crushed concrete, and they fell, and they skinned their knees, and, you know, all that normal stuff. And we got Christmas tree ornaments on her tree, the Main Street Leasing one, so, I mean, it's wonderful. And to Mr. Rolfson's point, I don't want to see this be like the antique boats and the seaplanes, you know, and that tree go somewhere else, because it really is a beautiful, beautiful tree. So, so that, that is without question. And, and for me, as a new councilperson, someone that, you know, doesn't really do this all the time for, for years and years, this has been the single most important issue to people that, you know, yank, yank on the street to just been measured. And I find it pretty interesting. So I've spent some time thinking about it because of that. So, so to the pedestrian mall, the Fourth Street View, if you yanked the tree out and moved it somewhere else in the Sunset, I'll address that in a moment, you still have a problem with parking, because there's a couple of cars that park between the railroad tracks and the bollards there all the time. So, you know, just yanking the tree out, if you don't solve that parking problem there too, you ruin the aesthetics. To the Sunset Park, I've been in construction with cranes, large objects. I've only eyeballed it. I think it'll fit, but it's pretty tight. I wouldn't say that it's, it's an exquisite spot, you know? And then as to the right-of-way itself, so this is the part where I have the hardest part, you know, feeling good about the tree where it's at, is that we're, we talk about parking, and we do a parking study, and we don't have the results yet. And I know that people are talking about trucks unloading. And I've been around that area, and I see from, generally speaking, midnight to noon, that space is not overly used by pedestrians, that that could be a spot for trucks to unload and load. And during the Christmas season, obviously, there's more purchases and whatnot. It would be a good spot. So, I mean, it's that. I don't like Alexander Street when you turn, I guess, uphill, northbound. That street, if, if you've been in anything larger than a Chevette, you always get scared coming up to that intersection. And everybody that's driving around, and all our visitors seeing our town, they come up that way, and it's a car accident waiting to happen. So, you know, having that available as a right-of-way makes sense to me, too. The carriage, obviously, that's, that's a good thing. So, so I guess I talked myself in a circle. But I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think the tree's wonderful. I think it's a great addition. And as far as the advertising or whatnot, that, that's pretty minor, one way or the other to me. But I, I really think that if we could find a better, a better spot, if it's Evans Park, if it's in Sunset, I just don't feel like giving up that real estate, that thoroughfare for that timeframe is great. But I know I'm kind of just talked both sides of my mouth, so I don't, I just leave it all out there as far as everything I could think of that might not have been mentioned, so, thanks.
So, thanks.
Would you repeat the, repeat the motion that we have?
Yes. Mr. Rich moved to give Main Street Leasing five years at the pedestrian mall area. Mr. Ralston seconded the motion.
I approve that contract. I might add to my motion, to my second, rather, if this moving party agrees, that assuming that Main Street Leasing is agreeable, that we should require that Sevigny Be added as an additional insured on Main Street Leasing's policy. If they'll agree to that.
Well, that, that doesn't, they don't have to agree to that, that's what we can assist on. So that's, you know, it's either, you know, our assistance, they either provide it or...
Yeah, I can see, I understand I say they agree, if they don't agree, then...
Actually, if they don't want to provide it, then they don't get a permit to do anything. The, yeah, from that standpoint, I would, I would assume, correct? So, okay. Again, I don't want to, I'd like to be able to talk a little bit more, not, I don't want to postpone it, okay, but I want, I want it to pass something. But, and I don't mind giving them a long-term approval. I think things need be worked out, maybe as far as a, as far as a location, things like that. And I'm just wondering if we can modify the, the motion to allow a little bit more negotiation with Main Street Leasing, maybe through myself and along with the new city manager, to maybe work out something that might be agreeable for everybody, and if possible. And if not, then we come back and say this is what has to be or not has to be.
Yeah, I, my understanding is there's a serious time crunch that they have, because they have to do some repairs to that tree, and the window within which the repairs have to be made is really short like now. And so I'm not sure how long negotiations take, and we have to come back to a council meeting, that's another two or so weeks from now, and that might close the window. So I think that's something that perhaps Mr. Baker, who's counsel, might want to talk about.
Well, I know we have a, you know, we have a, you know, meeting coming up, and I, I think some good talk and some good meetings, and, and I think things can be talked about and come up maybe. If, if it can't come up, then, then come, we come back with the recommendation of way, maybe where it has to be then. And I'd like to be able to have a, take a shot at it a little bit. And so we're not restricted, because I understand there's a lot, it's just not what's in the room, it's just not here with, with council, not wanting that. I've been inundated, I know with a lot of phone calls, a lot of people talking about this, pros and cons with it. And, and if we probably had a, another formal election on that, you'd probably get it right down the middle again on this thing. And, you know, do something, if took a vote on it with the whole public, because a lot of people are this way. I'd like to be able to work this thing out somehow, so that everybody can be happy with the locations, with all the terms of the agreement, because we have all these different things, but it's not an agreement yet. And I think we need to have, I think we need to see everything in an agreement format instead of just, you know, the, all the different terms in here. And, and look at that from that standpoint.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. If the time crunch is permits that, I'm, I'm with...
Yeah.
One more, one more comment. But the one thing that strikes me, we're talking about Sunset Park, we've all been there and hadn't eaten food trucks, there are trees all over the place, this is tree city. I don't know how many trees are going to have to be closely trimmed to permit that tree to even be there. So maybe we do need to talk about it, but I'm concerned about time is of the essence. And Main Street Leasing doesn't have to do this, they can walk away, sell the tree, and we don't have it at all.
I know they can.
So, you've got to, it'd be a little sensitive, too, to the gift.
But then again, you know, we, we, we look at these things, too, from the standpoint where, you know, we get something in, in a packet, you know, a few days ago, and we're asked to do something on, basically, again, on emergency. I know that, we've been talking about it, but it was still, it just came formally to us to, to, to look at it. Okay, so I just want to restrict something in, in a motion, if we can adjust a motion a little bit.
Yeah, I think that the request, though, is just, do you want it there at, at the Fourth Street Avenue? And if you do, you don't, that's fine. I think Main Street Leasing will make a decision if you don't want it there anymore, what, what the next steps will be. I can't speak for them, but I suspect that based on my prior conversation with Mr. Baker, that just tell us if it's, if you want to do it there, and then they can evaluate themselves on what those other alternatives would be.
Maybe that's the answer, Mayor, is just to vote, change the motion to vote on whether it's acceptable for a five-year contract at, at that location, and if that's acceptable...
That's already there. That motion, that's already the motion. I'm amazed, I'm just saying we do a five-year contract and then come back with a location if we can, if we can agree on something or look at something and have some discussions, a little more discussions on it. Know what, know what we know now.
Sure. Can we let Main Street Leasing speak to the issue?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we did. We had somebody that was giving them the first shot to, to comment. Mr., is there?
Mr. Mayor, would it be helpful if Mr. Baker went first, maybe?
No, but, okay. Then Mr. Kutchell have his turn.
Thank you very much. My name is Tom Kutchell, over at 346 East Sixth Avenue. And Ms. Rich, being much, much older...
Let's address the comments of the council, please.
Ms. Rich, being much, much older than you, I'm afraid there are two sides to every story. And I have to tell you, full disclosure, that tree pushes all of my buttons, all of them. First of all, about the horse and buggy, I always kind of liked that, it's kind of romantical, kind of Savannah, St. Augustine-ish, very nice. And I read the article where they were coming back to Mount Dora, and then when I didn't see them, I went on the interweb, whatever, and called the horse farm over in Ocala where they originate out of. And the lady was very kind, she told me that they wanted to come to Mount Dora, she said the horses, they like to bring them in the winter when it's cooler, it's easier for the horses, less stress on them. And she said, "We won't come to Mount Dora right now, because there's no place safe to park the horses." No place safe. I just paid a boatload of money for the two dedicated parking spots and the pump for the well for the water for the horses. So, you know, I, I don't know if this is part of the problem with the streetscape or just bad governing from the previous council. The tree is not supposed to be in the pedestrian walkway. And just from a legal or constitutional standpoint, the whole separation of church and state, if somebody were to come along that doesn't like a Christmas tree, say they want to put up a Festivus pole, they want to put a pole next to the tree, would that be some kind of legal issue moving forward? I have no idea. And the tree itself is, let's be honest, it's nothing more than a tax write-off, an advertising venue for Main Street Leasing with the four...
Please, Rose, was it, please, audience, let a man have his comments. If you want to comment, you're welcome to get up, but please respect a person's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's got the Main Street Leasing signs on all four sides. It has the, the continuous sound loop with a promotion from the previous mayor, you know, promoting Main Street Leasing. I don't know if we have promoted other businesses downtown, but from a business standpoint, if I were a downtown merchant, I would buy a big snowman from Walmart, put my name on it, slap it next to the tree, and dare the city to do anything about it. The location is dangerous. You see everyone, young and old, standing, just like you said, standing in the middle of Alexander and Fourth, trying to take selfies and other pictures, trying to move back and get the whole tree in the shot. And you can't, there's ongoing traffic, and they're standing there trying to take pictures. And it's difficult to walk around the tree, the tree is, it butts up to that barricade, you can't get between the barricade and the tree without tripping and falling, and it just takes up the entire walkway. Also, it is very noisy. As I said before, if there are musicians in the park, or at the Olive Branch, or Maggie's Alley, you can't hear them from the tree and the advertising.
Do you just complete your thought if you would...
Okay, I'm sorry. In short, the mechanical advertising tree in the pedestrian walkway is nothing short of corporate panhandling on the part of Main Street Leasing that needs to be put back on their private property. Put the tree back on Main, Main Street Leasing's empty lot at Fifth and McDonald. You have more room, safety for viewers, bleachers to sit on, and yes, it can hide that heavy construction equipment that's normally parked there. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Your comments. Mr. Baker?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Larry Baker, Main Street Leasing. We're good with the decision. I don't want it to be drug out and be a, a legal thing, or a tax thing, or a political thing, not, not, not the point of it. You know, we put it up in November because we have light up and in earlier, it's whenever it is, and we only have fifteen or twenty days to work the bugs out. And we take it down as soon as we can. But past that, I'm, I'm good with however you guys vote. If it, you know, we've enjoyed a great relationship with the city over the tree, and if, if it's time to do something else, we're, we're good with that. But I'd ask you to call a question and, and kind of decide which, which, which direction you want to go. Thank you.
Rosanna Bado, 531 East First Avenue in Mount Dora. I'm on record right up, I'm a big proponent of that tree where it is now, for it. When it was, when we first moved here, and it was around on the gravel lot, I really didn't even know it was there. And a lot of other people visiting Mount Dora didn't know that it was there. Now, in the current location, people who come, everybody sees it, you're walking along Donley, people go down there, it's the most photographed part of Christmas. That and the Marina are the most photographed things in Mount Dora during the Christmas season. We keep talking about people could get hurt. How many people have gotten hurt since that tree's been in that location? How many people have not been able to get around to Pisces or any of the other restaurants? Probably none. Main Street's paying the electricity, the taxpayers are paying the electricity for Donley Park and a whole lot of other lighting that we do. So my guess is that tree brings a whole lot more people into Mount Dora than those, that horse and buggy ever did. I mean, I've looked at the tree, been photographed in front of it, so has everybody else I've seen, and I haven't heard anybody ever ask, "Where's the horse and buggy?" I don't think there's any comparison. My guess is that there are a lot more places to put plants than around, maybe you move on another street or something. We have a lot more streets in Mount Dora that will accommodate a few plant exhibits than we do that will accommodate the, the size of that tree. I think if you move it over into Sunset Park, people aren't going to be able to see it as much. You're still going to have the traffic issues and people wandering around, trying to take a selfie. Part of the reason that people take so many pictures in front of that tree is because the lake is behind it and it's beautiful. I mean, you see it on Facebook, you see it everywhere, it's, it's gorgeous from there. And then the bottom line about Main Street Leasing having their signs on that, for God's sakes, they're paying a fortune for that tree, they bought the tree. If we had other people in this community who wanted to put up a fabulous Christmas tree, spend hundreds of thousands of their dollars, who cares if they put a sign on it? For God's sakes, they're paying for it, this isn't advertising. Give them a break. If I spent $200,000 and put a tree up, paid the electricity for it, I'd expect for it to have a big banner that said, "Paid for by Rosanna Bado." I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that. So I don't know why we are even arguing about this. It's a perfect location, everybody can get around it, it's not a big deal. I, I've never understood the, the argument about that location for that tree, it just makes no sense to me.
That was good. Three minutes.
Thank you for your comments.
Got a couple more.
Yeah. She, she had raised her hand. Could you, she had yielded Caroline, she had raised her hand, thank you.
Caroline K., 305 Shadow Harbor Lane, Mount Dora. I'm in completed agreement with Tom Kutchell's comments. I have many, 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 many people telling me that they resent the tree advertising in a public pedestrian mall. I think it's a slight to our other merchants that they're not advertised. And there's also the question of Main Street's illegal sign up on Fifth Avenue that still has not been remedied. I think that it is too much of a commercial outlet to be in a public pedestrian mall. That's my main objection to it. When it was in Mr. Mason's city parking lot area on Fifth and McDonald, he can do all of the advertising he wants to do if it meets the zoning requirements, but in a public walkway, it's not fair. It's not fair to the citizens, it's not fair to the other merchants. I think that Donley Street and all the merchants down there got slighted when all of the new money for renovations was spent in Mr. Mason's city block. And then there was no money left over for the beautification of the main street of our town, Donley. It looks like a stepchild compared to the city block around McDonald and Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue. It's like his property was gift-wrapped, and the other properties were left looking barren and old. And I think this is a further demoralizing factor for a lot of the merchants. I have no objection to that being on Mr. Mason's property, it's his right to advertise on his own property. And while I appreciate the beauty of the tree, I don't think it's a fair spot to be. As far as the carriage rods are concerned, that was tremendously popular and sorely missed. And it's very true that money was spent for those legal parking spots for the carriage. And now that money is not even being utilized because we don't have the carriages anymore. I think we need to definitely revisit this and not make any decisions. Thank you.
Gigi Phillips Jones, 3826, Cactus Lane, Mount Dora, Florida. First, I'd like to say, obviously, I love the tree. I think it's spectacular, I think it takes Mount Dora up that next level and again, and again, and again. As you all know, I grew up here. The Mount Dora today is better than anyone in my era ever dreamed it could be. It's more beautiful. When I was growing up, we said we lived near Orlando. Now Orlando says they live near Mount Dora. And that's how it's changed. We don't want to do anything to reverse that process. But the point I want to speak to hasn't been brought up. When Main Street Leasing put the tree up the first time in the gravel lot near my original first home, because that used to be a hotel, on Fifth and McDonald, we were so excited, we thought it was so neat. Within my very next Christmas, both my husband and I were handicapped. He still is. He's, he is bound to a scooter, he cannot walk. I've only been walking for the last four to five months, so I regained my mobility. We found out it's a whole different world when you can't walk, especially in a beautiful place like Mount Dora, that's all up and down hills and everything Mount Dora has done, and the rescaping, the redesigning of downtown has made Mount Dora more enjoyable for everyone who's handicapped. Every street you turn on, the sidewalks are wider, the access is better. And when the tree was at Main Street Leasing's headquarters in that gravel lot, it was not very accessible to the handicapped at all. We were thrilled when it was moved to the pedestrian mall. And as Mr. Ralston so well pointed out, I'm downtown all the time, too, and I hear visitor after visitor after visitor saying how much they love that tree, where it's located, how much they love having their pictures made. And I just think it adds so much to the town. I also know the merchants in that area, they haven't been complaining to me, they love the business it's bringing into their stores, and they say so. So please think carefully before turning down such a generous, magnificent gift to our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Stanley, 1450 Sylvan Drive, Mount Dora. And...
And hearing some of the objections, obstructing the pedestrian mall is the main one. Last time I looked, that mall had an entrance on the sidewalk to the left, and a sidewalk to the right, there's boulevards there with yellow chains. So there's really no direct access down that pedestrian mall, you have to go around. Mr. Slavy was right, at the other end, some people made these a parking lot. There's two cars parked there. The horse and carriage could probably get in that way, if we brought it back. But the main objection, it's not obstructing the pedestrian mall. The pedestrian mall is designed so that you have to go down the side, and there's the tree right in the middle. And I, like you, Mr. Rolfson, I volunteered at Lake Carers to serve those coffee and stuff. And a lot of the people I saw were also posing in front of the tree. So you're absolutely right. Mount Dora's, our main, one of our main events is Light Up Mount Dora, Christmas. We attract people for Christmas. People come for about two months while the lights are in the park. They also park, walk around, there's the tree. It's consistent with the marketing of Mount Dora as a Christmas destination. That's what we're trying to do, a Christmas destination. Come see our lights, come have the kids slide down the, slide down the snow when you bring it in. So this is entirely appropriate for this city, and Main Street Leasing is generous in putting this up. And as far as the advertising goes, this is America, there's advertising everywhere you look. The average person sees something like eight hundred images a day, just walking around. So, does this advertising work? Probably not, because you're a nerd, you're a nerd to it. But I understand it's one of the objections that's easy to make, but I think we should be very happy to have this tree provided by Main Street Leasing, and I think your suggestion of the park, there's pretty big trees in there, and I don't think you could probably get that one in there, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to address?
Monique Richardson, 745 Hill Top Court. I thought we were in favor of planting trees in the city, I guess I'm missing something there. As a photographer, I will say, people are talking about, where did you go? The lake in the background when you're taking a picture of Zam, and that is what I do see when I look at pictures of that on Facebook. And I've had friends actually say, we went down to see the tree, and here's a picture we took, and there they are, standing with the lake behind, and the tree behind them with their family. And as a photographer, if you put that tree in Sunset Park, you want to talk about people having to really back up in order to get that tree into frame, they're going to be backing up into Alexander Street, not just that intersection where people have to stop because of the stop signs, they're going to be backing up into Alexander Street. And I just wonder, I hope this isn't something else that uses takes from us. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
Good evening, the council, I'm Don Stewart, 1622 Nominee Drive, President of this Mount Dora. I never expected to speak here tonight, I was to the council's decision and let it go. But my life is the downtown merchants. All of our events, our festivals, our shows, are all designed to bring people and visitors into Mount Dora. The mission statement of my visit to Mount Dora is the promotion and advertising of Mount Dora. And I work intimately with the merchants all the time, constantly. And I did want to add what I could to the conversation, and that is, I have never heard one objection from one business about the Christmas tree. On the contrary, you will find that every business in this town, if you bring people to their front door and they're walking in, they love you, and they like what you're doing. And when you, that Christmas tree brings people into Mount Dora. And its location, that's a council decision, I never tried to tell council what to do, wouldn't do me any good if I tried. But at the same time, I think the location is excellent, it has provided no problems whatsoever that I'm aware of. There's already been conversation about adjusting the dates for the plant show. We love the plant show, we support the plant show, we work the plant show to help, and that's not going to be disturbed. That could be easily accommodated, that's not an issue. And I really don't think that, from my understanding, that the horse and carriage has to be eliminated, but at the same time, it can be accommodated as well, so it's a win-win-win-win. But I also have a question looking at Sunset Park. How are you going to jam that Christmas tree in there with all those trees that we put in there and paid so much money to put in there, and now we're going to go in and chop them all out to accommodate the tree? It just doesn't make sense to me, but I hope council makes the right decision, I trust that it will. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anybody else wish to address? Chair. Being on back to council, and I see people are taking notes, so I'm sure we're going to have some more discussion, so I'm going to allow it. Go ahead.
Mine will be short. We promote and encourage, as a city, public-private partnerships. That's one of the things that are promoted in cities, public-private partnerships. This is Exhibit A for public-private partnerships, in my opinion. Thank you.
Phil?
I've heard, just as everybody else has, comments for the Four Street Mall location, and comments to the contrary. I certainly agree that the tree is a gift, and that it should go to Main Street Leasing for providing the tree. I don't think there's a perfect location anywhere, so I support the location on the mall. I also support Mr. Rolfson and the mayor's suggestions to add the indemnification and that, but I support the location where it is overall, not being perfect, but pretty good.
Any other? Ms. Slavy?
Yep. So, on this issue, I am very much conflicted. I really have no dog in this fight if there is a side on each side of this town. I really am not a Hatfield nor a McCoy. But I think of the F-word, and that's fair. And I think of process, I think of transparency, so when I go out of here tonight and if I vote for this, I'm going to hear something like this. I wish I had a chance for a five-year contract to put my thing in the mall area, and I am also in the back of my mind going to think, and it ain't going to look one-tenth as good as that Christmas tree either. But I go within the next level, go, yeah, but there wasn't a form filled out, there wasn't the process that at least we could shut the people up who are just going to complain and complain and complain. There has to be processes that are above, above, above anyone's reproach. So, I would rather we just say, let's wait for a week, so that someone can apply to use that space, and I suspect no one will. But I think there should be a process that other people can have a shot at it, whether it's the Festivus poll, or whatever it is. But this town, the only thing I hear about when I get my ear bent is about this group or that group gets unfair or extra treatment, and I want to figure out ways to eliminate that. So, I don't see why a gift should include advertising. If it's a gift, it should be without advertising, that's my personal view on what a gift is. If you need to give a gift with advertising, it's not a gift, it's a private-public partnership, which I'm okay with, but it's no longer a gift. So, I'm troubled with that. So, then the old idea of the pedestrian mall being available to the horse and carriage, someone was sold on the idea to spend some money for a horse and carriage, and we can't accommodate one. That doesn't make sense. So maybe there's a different spot to put it, but I really don't, I don't believe that I can support it right now because I just don't feel like it's been buttoned up, and that I can go the next twenty-one months without getting my ear bent all the time on how I'm giving somebody unfair advantage. And I'm glad to be persuaded otherwise, but right now I'm going to not support its location. And I still stick with the ho, ho, ho. I really, I still love the tree, but I just am trying to, I'm trying to, to come across my time in council with the idea of being fair to everybody.
I think that's important, staying with being fair to everybody, and I think it's a good idea to bring it out to the other businesses, because I hear, I hear the same thing, they got the tree, why can't I do anything? So now we can put it out to them, if they show up, fine, if they don't, now we know. But I agree with Mr. Slavy, I think we need to get the other businesses involved and see what they say.
Okay. Got some good thoughts here, and I know the whole issue, you know, where we put a tree, the, there's only two spots for this tree that I know of, that I can't even think that would be anywhere near, to help to promote the city in any fashion, that's either on Main Street Leasing's property, okay, on that corner, or at the mall where it is right now, and where it was put. And I've told people, time and time again, I have no real issue with the area where it is now, there's issues with the other area, and I know that, and, but it is a nice area, and it can accommodate a lot of people. However, when we're looking at fairness, we look at fairness, it's not only fairness to the merchants, and that's been represented by other council people, but it's fairness to the people of the city, and I think it's fairness to the people of, who come visit the city from all places, from the, you know, from the state. I go to different conferences, I go to different venues outside of the city, and, and when I tell people, and I know probably Mayor Hoss has already had the same things when she was there, when you go out around the state and you tell people from Mount Dora, and there's always, you know, two things, oh, we're at a quaint city, we love your city, we love it at Christmas time, we love it, you know, they just love it anytime, except summer, nobody loves Florida in the summertime, that's a given, so don't worry about summertime, folks. But the, but any, at any time, the spring, the fall, people love this city, and, and it is an attraction, and Main Street Leasing is providing it. And when we're talking about other businesses stepping up, I don't know if other businesses would step up, because the Main Street Leasing has had a commitment to this project for, it was here when I moved here in 2010, the tree was here then, and so you can tell me how long you had it before that, but I, first time I've seen it was 2010. So, so I don't know how long it's been there before that, but, yeah, I'm, just like Mr. Slavy, I'm conflicted on what to do here. I'm looking at it, I'm trying to look at things from a fairness factor to what the majority of the people, I think, in the city like, and what they want to have. I think some of the issues that have been brought up here can be worked out, and I still think they can be worked out. If there's another location, possibly, that can be worked out, I'd be glad to hear it. But I don't know, right offhand, other than those two locations, where this council can go, and I don't want to put, I personally don't want to do a decision that's going to say this is, we're not going to have a Christmas tree anymore, and that, or that tree there. And I understand the constitutional issues, but you know what, I'm willing to fight that issue if it ever came to us, over a Christmas tree like that, a city-sponsored Christmas tree advertisement, I think there's things we can work out as far as some of the advertising thing, and then I think Mr. Baker and Mr. Mason has heard a lot along those lines tonight, so I think that's stuff that can be worked out. I think I'm going to have to, I'm really going to have to try to support this, saying word to this, only from the standpoint that this is probably the only one location that we really do have in the city to work with. And the Sunset Park, and I agree with, that was one of always my first thoughts, you know, we built Sunset Park, it's got that nice big open area, but we do have that issue of the canopies that are there now, the canopy trees that we have there now. They're not going to, I don't think, unless you trim the trees, not cut them down, they was going to cut trees down, but unless you trim the trees, I don't think you're going to get the height that you're going to need to get that tree in place on the platform where it is. That's basically what I'm saying with this one right now, and, and I know, and just like Mr. Slavy's going to hear some things, I'm sure I'm going to hear some things, too. But unfortunately, I think this is the name of the game, we have here, the city council make a decision, there's fairness on, I think, on both sides of the issue when it comes to this. And I think we can work out the fairness issues with our merchants and advertisers that we have in the city, but I for one do not want to look a gift horse in the mouth too much, because it will bite you, and so...
Mayor, are we going to vote?
Yes, we're going to vote, yes, we are. Unless there's any other comments from the council.
I got a couple more. So I'm looking at the map, and I've walked the town, and there's certainly spots that that tree will fit in. Donley between Fourth and Third, Donley between Fifth and Fourth, Fourth between Donley and Dora Drawdy Way, Fourth between Baker and North Donley, there's many places where there are not power lines and it would fit, and so, I, I just am not sure why we would put a carriage park and a pedestrian park, and then essentially block most of its movement through there. So, I'm not comfortable at this point supporting it.
Ms. Stewart?
Here, down by the Marina in Evans Park, and the Marina is already does their thing there, down by the Marina.
Can Ms. Stewart make a comment?
Yeah, are we going to be voting on the alternatives here, or is it just...
The motion on the floor is just to do a five-year contract in the pedestrian mall, is what the motion is.
That's right. Let's see items we would address.
Do I need to move the previous question, or should we vote?
No, I think we're ready.
Okay.
You all discussed additional insured being added, are we doing that or not?
Yes.
Is that part of the motion?
Yes. It'll be a, for what I gather, it's going to be a, that they will provide, that they shall indemnify and hold harmless to city regarding any claims, based on alternate one, other item number five, alternate one, and if that includes additional insured, then just add that phrase.
It was just unclear if that was part of the motion.
I would recommend adding to the motion that in addition to that, the city would require that it be an additional insured on Main Street Leasing's liability policy. It's no brain, or the insurance companies do that routine, it just gives us protection.
Just have to make sure I get it right in a minute. Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfson?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
No.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Roulette?
No.
Ms. Tillot?
No.
Mr. Jerome?
I'm going to go yes with this. We still have a long night, and I didn't bring a sack on. You know, we had the city, city attorney updates, city manager updates, city council comments, let's take, let's take a, let's take a quick break, about ten minutes, because I think I need it also.
When did you last see it for that, that's what I have.
I know, I couldn't think of the name of the vehicle.